Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order this Tuesday, November 12th, meeting of the Pierce County Council. The time is 3:03 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Krueger.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera.
Here.
Councilmember Hitchen.
Here.
Councilmember Morell.
Here.
Councilmember Mello.
Here.
You have seven members present.
We have all seven members present in a quorum. Amendment number three is our Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, our Moment of Silence, and our Land Acknowledgement. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag led by Councilmember Denson, followed by a Moment of Silence dedicated to our men and women serving overseas in the military, and then the Land Acknowledgement read by Councilmember Denson. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We acknowledge that we are on the traditional homelands of the Coast Salish tribes. Coast Salish people have lived on and stewed at these lands since time immemorial and continue to do so today. We recognize that this land acknowledgement is one small step towards true allyship, and we commit to uplifting the voices, experiences, and histories of the indigenous people of this land.
Thank you, Councilmember Denson. We're now at Section Four, which is the approval of our agenda. Are there any objections to approving today's agenda as presented? Seeing no objection, the agenda is approved. On today's council agenda, there will be multiple opportunities for public comment. On the consent agenda, you may provide comment on any final action item. This does not include items placed on our consent agenda simply for introduction and scheduling. So on today's consent agenda, there are one set of minutes for approval and one appointment resolution. Those are subject to public comment. During Section Nine of our agenda, we will take public comment on the single ordinance that's listed on our agenda. And then finally, under Community Forum, we will have an opportunity to address the council on any topic that is not up for final action today on today's agenda. For information on our rules for public participation, please review the bottom of page one of today's agenda. We're now at Section Five and have the consent agenda before us. Does any member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, Vice Chair Campbell, for a motion, please.
Thank you, Chair. I move the consent agenda as presented.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented. This is a public hearing on the final action items on our consent agenda, which is the one set of minutes and the appointment resolution. Does any member of the public wish to provide comment on these final action items on our consent agenda, starting here in council chambers? Now, seeing anybody come to the podium? Mr. Weinsberg, anybody in the Zoom room?
Yes, sir. For any members of the public who wish to provide comment on any final action items, press the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And there are no hands at this time, Chair.
With no hands, we're going to close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the consent agenda?
Councilmember Krueger.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchen.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The results of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the consent agenda is adopted. Amendment number six, messages from the executive and other county-elected officials. There are none today. Under Section Seven, Proclamations, Recognitions, Awards, and Presentations, there are none there either, and there are no resolutions. That does bring us to Section Nine, ordinances. We have proposal O-2024-553-S before us. Councilmember Denson, for a motion, please.
Thank you, Chair. I move, um, hold on, let me get this right, I move that we approve proposal number O-2024-553.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2024-553-S. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number O-2024-553-S, an ordinance of the Pierce County Council related to critical areas, adopting amendments to Pierce County Code, Chapter 18.25, definitions, and Title 18E Development Regulations Critical Areas, to update the county's critical area regulations using best available science consistent with the Growth Management Act, adopting findings of fact, and setting an effective date.
Thank you. Ms. Red Hunt, we got to this a lot quicker than I promised you in the hallway that we were going to get to this.
You did.
You've been working hard, as you always do, but a lot more today. Do you need a break?
No, I am ready to go.
You sure?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Ms. Red Hunt, to brief the council, please.
Okay. So, for the record, I'm Erica Red Hunt, council staff. Proposed ordinance 2024-553-S updates the critical area regulations as part of the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review and Update. The ordinance addresses the rules for critical areas in the uplands, or areas outside of shoreline jurisdiction. Planning Public Works is preparing a separate package to address critical areas in the shoreline to meet similar but separate guidelines and requirements applicable within shoreline master program jurisdiction. Critical areas are places of environmental sensitivity and those that pose a hazard to life and property. Regulated critical areas include wetlands, flood hazard areas, critical aquifer recharge areas, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, and geologically hazardous areas. Achieving no net loss of ecological functions and processes is a core principle of the update. Best available science was used to develop regulations that should ensure no net loss. And mitigation sequencing is also applied to present, pardon me, to prevent the loss of ecological processes and functions by offering a prioritized list of measures to first avoid and then limit impacts. There's updates throughout Chapter 1825, as well as Title 18E to update terminology and standards in according with best available science, no net loss, and mitigation sequencing. The biggest changes in the proposal affect the size of buffers for wetlands and for fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. In both cases, buffers are proposed to increase. Wetland buffers vary by the type of wetland and quality of the habitat functions that are already present in the wetland area, and so wetland buffers are typically represented by a range of features based on that criteria. And while in most cases, the upper range for wetland buffers is not increasing, the lower end of the range is increasing to be larger. Maintaining a habitat corridor can reduce the size of the required buffer. And fish and wildlife habitat areas, those buffers are updated to match the state's water typing system and to meet the best available science from Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife related to the potential tree height of a site. Some other changes in this package include updates to processes and procedures throughout Title 18E for consistency with permitting process improvements that were recently adopted, a new table of allowed uses in wellhead protection areas and critical aquifer recharged areas, consistent with the policies of the county's adopted Coordinated Water System Plan from 2001, some new standards and procedures for landslide hazard areas that resulted from the best available science that came out of the Oso landslide tragedy, and updates and clarifications on exemptions and review waivers consistent with state law and best available science. So this includes requiring an activity review for new agricultural activities within wetland or fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, but many agricultural activities are allowed with best mass management practices or farm management plan. The proposal comes to council with a due pass as substituted recommendation, and committee amendments included in the substitute include restoring language related to the shoreline master program that was proposed for removal, prohibiting the expansion of piers and docks in nearshore salmon habitat, in critical nearshore salmon habitat, some alternate requirements for the submittal of those farm management plans that I just referred to previously, specifically in critical aquifer areas and channel migration zones, and then some technical amendments correcting errors in the ordinance. The department prepared an equity note for this proposal and declared it to have a de minimis financial impact. The proposal was included in the environmental review of the comprehensive plan, and we talked a little bit about this at study session. Because it was included in that package, the FEIS, the Final Environmental Impact Statement, is anticipated to be released in late November, and under CEPA rules, final action may be taken one week after publication of that FEIS. So the anticipated first date available for final action would, on that basis, would be December 3rd. There are 11 amendments proposed for discussion today.
Well done, Ms. Red Hunt. Mr. Perez, on behalf of the Planning and Public Works Department, what do you have You're on mute, Mr. Perez. I don't think you, I think you're signaling you don't have anything to add. You are available, we'll let you work on your audio issues. We cannot hear you.
I think that's resolved.
There we go.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, you know, as far as all of this, the CAO and the critical area ordinance has been a long project that has taken a very significant amount of work to get to this point, and I'm really happy that it's here. You know, there is still concerns about some of the amendments, but, I mean, those have been already communicated to council and council staff. So if you have further questions on those, I'd be willing to answer on specifics to amendments as they come through.
Thank you. We have heard your feedback through council staff, and feel free to continue to communicate. We're not going to do final until December 3rd, but thank you for being here available. As indicated, this project has been a long time in the making, about two years already of staff and stakeholder and consultant work, and this has been before the council's Community Development and Environment Committee many, many times, including for markup, to get to this point. So there's been lots of public input, there's been many years of staff work and consultant work. Our plan today, now that we got our staff briefing, and this is properly in front of the full council, we will consider the 11 amendments there in front of us, we'll then take a public hearing, and then I anticipate the council continuing this item to the meeting of December 3rd, so that we can have a properly complete environmental impact statement as a companion to this proposal that's in front of us. So with that, we have council amendment number one in front of us. Councilmember Denson, for a motion, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I move for approval, council amendment number one.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt council amendment number one. Ms. Red Hunt.
Thank you very much. Council amendment one corrects some staff errors that were, that were in the implementation of committee amendment one from the Community Development and Environment Committee. So it includes, in point one, it includes, so let me take one quick step back, committee amendment one, restored language applicable to the shoreline master program in the critical area regulations. In doing so, we restored language that the department had proposed for strike-through, including language that limited regulations to lakes and ponds less than 20 acres in size. 20 acres is the threshold for something being a shoreline in state law. And we also, the proposal, or the amendment also restored language related to tsunami hazard areas. So when we were creating the substitute, we realized there were a couple of corrections that needed to be made there. In the first point, it was removing the strike-through from the less than 20 acres on Table 18E40060-1. Also in that table, it inadvertently deleted the standard for what those, the standard of what the riparian protection area was, which is 100 feet. So while it shows that as being an addition in this packet, it's not a new standard, it was just accidentally deleted through a Scribner's error. And then it also restores, in one instance, in 18E90030A5, it restores a tsunami or language to restore the applicability of that provision to tsunami hazard areas. So for the most part, these are technical corrections related to implementation of committee amendment one.
Thank you. Are there questions about council amendment number one? Councilmember Morell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question to staff is, on the lakes and ponds, we struck less than 20 acres, is that correct? So it's a 100-feet buffer. What determines a pond?
So, a pond isn't a strict definition, it's a, it's a body of, it's a, it's a body of water that in this case would have be less than 20 acres in size and would meet the other criteria for what a lake or pond is. And perhaps Mr. Perez has at his fingertips how that's defined currently in code?
Yeah, so any, any lake, pond, or water body that is 20 acres or less in size is not regulated by the shoreline management program. So the strikeout there would be that it would apply to, well, the way that's worded in the amendments that you have before you is, there doesn't seem to be any footnote or anything like that that would apply as far as like S and P, CAO overlapping.
Okay, I guess I'll pose the same question to you, Mr. Perez. What defines a pond?
Well, a pond would be oftentimes a non-naturally occurring water body. It doesn't necessarily have to be that, but oftentimes they are man-made, and most of them are less than 20 acres in size and so aren't protected under the shoreline management program.
Excuse me, Councilmember Morell. Our current definition of pond in County Code 1825, ponds means naturally occurring open water areas less than 20 acres in size and larger than 2,500 square feet, which maintain standing water throughout the year and lack rooted aquatic vegetation.
Thank you for that answer. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Krueger.
Thank you, Chair. I think that may have been answered, but I, because I was going to ask, are we talking naturally made pond versus man-made pond?
Correct.
So man-made is not part of this?
It's specific, it specifically is naturally occurring.
Okay, good, thank you.
Correct.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions about amendment one? Seeing none, we'll take a voice vote on the adoption of council amendment number one. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The amendment is adopted. We have council amendment number two before us. Councilmember Denson, for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I move that we approve amendment number two.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt council amendment number two. Ms. Red Hunt.
Council amendment two provides two technical amendments to the ordinance itself. So the first amendment inserts the dates of the committee hearings of September 30th and October 2nd. The second makes a minor correction to Section One to ensure that the description of the, of the change there matches the description in the title of the ordinance.
Any questions on council amendment number two? Seeing any, we'll take a voice vote on the adoption of council amendment number two. Are those in favor of adopting council amendment number two, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion's adopted. Right, council amendment number three, Councilmember Morell, for a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I move for approval, council amendment number three.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt council amendment number three. Mr. Krueger, to brief.
Good afternoon, Chair. Mike Krueger, council staff. Amendment number three would authorize wildfire defensible space activities within critical area buffers near buildings to be modified in order to protect existing structures. Happy to take any questions or dive deeper into the amendment if you would like, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We did have a good discussion at our study session at noon today. Do any members have any further questions or comments on amendment number three? Councilmember Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. You addressed this earlier on, existing versus future. What about something that's currently permitted but hasn't been built yet?
It would be grandfathered to the regulations that were in effect on the date that it was permitted.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And, Mr. Krueger, to clarify, we're talking about defensible space, like firewise type activities to, to keep something in an urban interface up next to a wildland, let's say, to try to protect life and property in the event of a wildfire. We're not talking about really clearing, but we're talking about understory brush that may be hazardous and prone to wildfire, or limbing up trees and the bottom limbs oftentimes, if not well taken care of, can contribute to wildfire. Can you make sure we're accurately understanding the impact and the picture here about the intent?
Right, that's precisely what it is. It's recognizing that there are situations where you may have critical area buffers right up against existing buildings. This would allow for the property owner to do limited brush thinning, tree limb removal in order to create defensible space in the event of a wildfire within critical area buffers. This does not impact folks' ability to have wildfire defensible space around their homes in non-critical area environments. It's exclusively to clarify that the county would allow protection measures to be made in these buffers in the event that you have pre-existing buildings and the, and right up against a buffer.
Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments on amendment number three? Seeing any, we'll take a voice vote on the adoption of council amendment number three. Are those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion's adopted. Right, amendment number four, Councilmember Morell, for a motion, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I move for approval, council amendment number four.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt council amendment number four. Ms. Red Hunt.
So council amendment number four would restore the exemption that allows a one-time expansion of primary, single-family residential structures within, both, within all critical areas, essentially. So in the current regulations that we have on the books, this is allowed for all critical areas. In the proposal, it only allows them in wetland, in wetland, wetland area, wetland buffer areas. So this, in a practical sense, this would also extend the allowance of this one-time expansion of a single-family residence in, in the vicinity of fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas as well. The exemption language is exactly as it reads in today's Pierce County Code, and it exempts both interior reconstruction and remodeling, as well as the one-time expansion that meets various standards as shown in point, point one, including that the expansion or reconstruction can be no greater than 25%, and it has to be in a direction away from the critical area.
I think that's the, what you ended with is a very key point in understanding the amendment. So just to restate, my understanding of the amendment is allowing an expansion up to 25%, but the expansion has to be away from the critical area.
Correct.
So if you're extending a garage or another bedroom on your existing home, it can't be toward the shoreline, it has to be away from the shoreline.
Correct.
Or away from the wetland. Other questions? Councilmember Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. The first time we were briefed on this and I read it, when I read primary, single-family home, I assumed it was like a primary home, as in somebody lived there, but could corporate homes owned by entities also take advantage of this? People that are running businesses out of their home take advantage of this? Or is it only like, I own the home, I'm living in it?
So it has to be a single-family structure, and when it says primary, it means, that refers to, it's the primary use on the site. So, for example, if someone had an accessory dwelling unit, they would not necessarily get a one-time expansion for the accessory dwelling unit, they only get it for the expansion of the primary use, the single-family structure.
So a home that's being used full-time as a short-term rental could take advantage of this?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any other questions, comments? I, I like the package that came out of committee. I appreciate Councilmember Morell working on more amendments, especially because Councilmember Morell was not available, and we knew he was bringing forward amendments. I should have said this before, Councilmember Morell made his intentions very well known that because his schedule did not allow him to be in committee when we marked this up finally in committee, that he was going to be bringing amendments forward. So thank you for daylighting that early. Because of the direction here of still providing limitations for existing facilities and that the, any add-on would be away from a critical area, not within a critical area, that makes me more comfortable in personally accepting this amendment. So I just wanted to state my reasoning, as I've thought through this amendment in particular. Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, and I don't know if Ms. Red Hunt said it now, but I know it was said at study session, so I'm blurring. They would still have to comply with any septic tank upgrade or anything, so you've added square footage, we've added two more bedrooms, that changes the septic, they then would have to upgrade the septic to match what the new structure is. Is that correct?
Yes, so all this, they would still need to abide by all the rules for expanding structures, meeting health and sanitary requirements, et cetera.
So, as I look at it, and in some cases, the family's growing, allows you to stay in the home by adding on extra bedroom, or just put a little more density on some properties. So for me, this is something that I can support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other remarks on council amendment number four? Seeing none, we'll take a voice vote on the adoption of council amendment number four. Are those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We have council amendment, council amendment number five before us. Councilmember Morell, for a motion, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I move for approval, council amendment number five.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt council amendment number five. Ms. Red Hunt.
Council amendment number five would, would increase the size of category four wetlands that are exempt from impact avoidance or mitigation, and allow- that are exempt from impact avoidance or mitigation, and allow an exemption for Category Three wetlands. Under our current critical areas regulations, we exempt Category Four wetland, which is the, the least, Category Four wetlands are small, isolated, have low function and value. They're the, they're the lowest category of wetland. And we currently exempt 10,000 square foot from, from the requirements of the critical areas ordinance. The proposal would exempt, would, would lower that exemption to a 4,000 square foot exemption, and this amendment proposes a 6,000 square foot exemption. Similarly, for Category Three wetlands, which provide a little more habitat and function value than a Category Four, our current Pierce County Code exempts a 2,500 square foot Category Three wetland, and, and that is proposed to, that exemption for Category Three wetlands is proposed to be removed in the proposal. This amendment would allow a 2,000 square foot exemption.
Thank you. There questions or comments about Amendment Five? Councilmember Morel?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. On this one, Erica, just to follow up on the questioning that kind of happened during study session, as far as best available science on these, whether it be increases or decreases of square footage, is, does best available science kind of box in what square footage is acceptable and not acceptable?
So, like many areas of science, there's general consensus that lower exemptions are less likely to create cumulative impacts and net loss. However, there's no consensus on what that means from an exact number standpoint. And, and if we think about, you know, the variation across jurisdictions, it probably does vary, you know, for circumstances and jurisdictions. So, in the, in the best available science documents that the department relied on for this, the document that the ecology guidance on wetlands acknowledges that any exemption or some level of exemption is going to cause a cumulative impact, but there's no set standard that they, that they know of that, that does cause a cumulative impact. They basically, in their model ordinance, suggested these standards. They are based on their reading of the science, but it acknowledges that there is no, as you say, it's not boxed into a certain number, whereas, you know, on, on other areas, they do have a clearer guidance on some specific numbers.
Okay. So, Department of Ecology, really, they have kind of a model recommendation, but beyond that, you know, it really isn't cast in stone.
That is correct.
As far as recommendation goes, and, and we don't get into fish and wildlife on wetland issues. Are there any other departments that would engage in the categories of wetlands other than ecology?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. I'm less comfortable with this amendment. I think the department worked really hard with the best available science. I get that it's not exact science, but the best available science that's in front of them to analyze, think it through. You know, we have a lot of degradation of wetland habitat in that particular critical area in urban, putative sound, and it's a really important function for, for a lot of things, including air quality, water quality, fish and wildlife habitat, and we've really degraded our wetland habitat, especially here in urban, putative sound. So, I am, I'm less comfortable degrading the, the protection of wetlands from the department's Other remarks? Vice Chair Campbell.
I was going to make a motion, but if there are other comments, probably come back for a motion.
Thank you. Let's see if others have, thank you. Councilmember Kruger.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. I, I'm looking at this, it seems there's already a lot of protection in here when we're looking at, does not score six or more points, and so this is, to me, the least of, of the effects that could happen in a manner that might be detrimental to a wetland. But I also wanted to comment on the concept of best available science, in that while the concept represents the most credible and reliable body of knowledge based on current research and methodologies, but it does not inherently reflect absolute truth, and that's for many reasons. Primarily, that science is a continuous and iterative process, and so what is accepted today can be revised or refuted with new findings, and that the nature of the scientific inquiry relies heavily on hypothesis, on experimentation, and peer review, meaning that conclusions are provisional and subject, subject to change as new data comes. And then, again, the interpretation of data can vary among scientists that are due to differing methodologies, biases, and theoretical frameworks, and that this variability can lead to conflicting conclusions, can create ambiguity around what constitutes truth, and additionally, the influence of external factors such as funding sources, political agendas, and public opinion can affect research priorities and the dissemination of scientific findings. And best available science often involves model-based predictions that incorporate assumptions and uncertainties, which complicates the interpretations of results. And there's a little bit more on that, but based on all of this, you know, could be, might be, should be, this is a very low intrusive way of allowing for more lands to be available that people own with very little effect to the wetland. I would urge support. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Denson.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to concur with your previous comments in regards to the importance of our wetlands here in Western Washington. I think we all know what precious areas they are. They're so important in, in regards to our natural processes, they're important to wildlife habitat, they're important to our, our water quality and water resources here, they're important for carbon sequestration and urban tree canopy, and there's probably all sorts of benefits of wetlands that we don't even understand, but we do know they're important, they're precious, when they're gone, they're gone. And so, I too am appreciative of the department's recommendations of, as, as presented to us in the critical areas ordinance before us today, and so I'm going to be a no on this amendment as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell.
I believe Councilmember Morel is proposing this. You said that this was within the best available science parameters, and so, but now I'm not sure if we should be listening to that or not. And so, I, I think we have a really good start here, but I don't think we're there because of just some of the definitions, and I want to look at some maps around the numbers. So, with that, I would actually like to, if we could, continue this, since we are continuing the meeting, continue this amendment to the, and would I just continue it to the meeting of December 2nd, or do I continue it with no date?
Please, on.
So, at, at this point, you, you'd probably want to withdraw the amendment, and then you could hold it over to the next meeting where you'd consider it, so we don't have an unresolved motion on the table.
Okay. And so, would Councilmember Morel need to withdraw it?
It belongs to the bodies.
Yeah, anyone could make a motion to withdraw, and it would be seconded, it's the choice of the body.
Okay. Then I would like to make a motion to withdraw Council Amendment Number Five to Proposal
Second? It's been properly moved and seconded that we withdraw Council Amendment Number Five to this proposal. Any further remarks on the motion? The motion is to withdraw Council Amendment Number Five. I'm hearing some members wanting to work on it more. I've stated my, my concerns, and I, I know why others are, why the makers are bringing it forward, and I appreciate the, the good conversation. The, take a voice vote on the adoption, on, on the amendment to withdraw Council Amendment Number Five. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion's adopted. The amendment is withdrawn. Right, Council Amendment Number Six, Councilmember Morel for a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, I move for approval, Council Amendment Number Six.
Second? It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt Council Amendment Number Six. Ms. Wright-Hunt?
Council Amendment Six makes a small change in 18E30O25C7. So, this is a subsection that allows for walkways and trails under limited circumstances within wetland buffer areas. So, the, the minor change here is that in the last sentence of the section, it says, raised boardwalks utilizing non-treated, non-treated pilings shall be acceptable, which replaces the current proposed language, which says it may be acceptable. So, the, the amendment would say those types of raised boardwalks shall be acceptable.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments about this amendment? Thank you, Councilmember Morel, for bringing it forward. I think there's several good examples of raised boardwalks in critical areas. One very close to here is Snake Lake. There's a great raised boardwalk that helps the public access a really sensitive area. There's examples at Morse Wildlife Preserve, that might be in Councilmember Moore's district, the disqualified wildlife refuge. There's, there's a lot of really great examples of raised boardwalks being utilized in order to bring some access in a sensitive way while still protecting the, the natural resource. I, I will be supporting this amendment. I appreciate Councilmember Morel bringing it forward. Any other remarks? Seeing none, the vote is on the adoption of Council Amendment Number Six. Are those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion's adopted. We have Council Amendment Number Seven before us, Councilmember Morel for a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, I move for approval, Council Amendment Number Seven.
Second? It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt Council Amendment Number Seven. Ms. Wright-Hunt?
Amendment Number Seven would move the references to a standard for ongoing agricultural activities as part of existing agricultural activities. So, there's two places in the proposal where the issue of what consists and exists, what an existing agricultural activity consists of, that occurs in both eighteen, Chapter 1825, which is where the county maintains its definitions for the development code, and then it also occurs in 18E20O3OH3. So, that's the critical area regulations. The, the definition of agricultural activities existing includes provisions which say that an operation ceases to be ongoing when it has lain idle for a period of longer than five years unless registered in a federal or state soils conservation program. So, this would remove the, the language relating to what constitutes an ongoing activity, and that would occur in both Chapter 1825, which is shown as Point One in the amendment, as well as eighteen, Chapter 18E20, which is shown at Point Two in the amendment.
Thank you. Are there remarks about Council Amendment Number Seven? Vice Chair Campbell.
As I said at study session, supportive of this, but I think some of the underlying work is good, but that five years is way too short. As I've said many times, I grew up on a small farm in Nebraska, and when I left to go to college, my parents realized they had to take care of the farm rentals themselves and promptly sold them off shortly thereafter, because they didn't have the free labor. And they had busy jobs then, and they came back about a decade later, and then when their jobs settled down, they were spending more time at home, they were able to return to some of the activities. And that's where I say five years is a pretty short turnaround in agricultural timeframes. So, talking with the, the maker and with staff about can we look at a 10-year window, and I think that felt that it was, so I would like to propose an oral amendment that we, and I'll, I'll talk it through, see if there's any feedback to it, and then come back and make the formal amendment, if that's okay with you, Chair.
Sure.
Would return the, the, what is struck out in Part One would be put back in, the five would be changed to 10, Section Two would remain struck out because it's duplicative of what is already up above anyways.
So, we could do this one of two ways. We could do, if staff, I think these are very technical documents, they need to be accurate. Is your advice to come back with a redrafted amendment, or is the amendment, the oral amendment clear enough for us to consider in your estimation?
I, I find it to be clear enough to proceed.
Let's see if other members understand, realize there hasn't been an amendment. Vice Chair Campbell, I think thoughtfully talked through the intent. Let's see if there's more discussion before an amendment is offered, so we don't have to unravel a whole bunch of things. And then, Mr. Perez, Mr. Perez, why don't I go to you before, before I go to Councilwoman Denson? What do you have to offer?
I was just going to give you the, the sort of the underlying reason that the five years was there was largely to align it with the USDA's definition of ongoing agriculture, which does include that five-year limit in there. But, you know, I mean, I don't, I can't advise you on, on what changing that would do in that regard, other than those properties that exceed the five years that's allowed by the USDA programs wouldn't be eligible for those, but they'd be eligible for local ongoing agriculture, if that makes sense.
You, you were, you were sharing the reasoning for the department's proposal of five years.
Yeah.
Has to do with USDA definition here, so that's what you were trying to, that, that's the reasoning behind picking out five years in a proposal.
That, that is correct. Yep.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Denson, your light was up earlier.
Yes, Chair, I was just going to support Councilmember Campbell's thoughts here. I was going to offer something kind of similar, but I, I like the way he's done it, and I'm perfectly happy with that, and coming from two farming families as well, I completely understand that things change, especially as, I think Councilmember Morel gave the example of, you know, families changing and, and figuring out who's going to take over the farm, and if there's tenants, and I mean, there's, there's all sorts of things that can happen, and I think we're all interested in seeing as many of our farms continue as possible. So, if this is helpful, then, then I'm happy to suggest what council, or to support what Councilmember Campbell has put forth.
Thank you. I'm also buying time for Vice Chair Campbell to really clearly state the motion as clear as possible. Councilmember Kruger.
Thank you, Chair. I just was wondering if Mr. Perez knew if the five-year USDA number was recent, or if that's perhaps been in code for 10, 20, 30 years.
I can't speak to necessarily how long it's been in the RCW and all that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other remarks before we come back to Vice Chair Campbell? Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to amend Council Amendment Number Seven to, in Section One, restore the struck-out portions, amend where it says five years to 10 years. And that's really the only amendment that I'm making.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to amend Council Amendment Number Seven to remove the strikeout in Section One of the amendment, and where it says five years. Sorry, there's no line numbers. So, we're going really slow. So we're going really slow to make sure every member understands what's in front of them. Of the line that starts with "of longer than five years," it's currently struck out. So all of that would be not struck out any longer. And the five in that sentence would be changed to 10. Everything else in the amendment stays the same. Vice Chair Campbell, do you want to speak any further to the amendment?
I think I spoke to it before.
Any other questions about the amendment, the amendment to the amendment that's in front of us? So the amendment to the amendment is to unstrike the language in Section One, change the word five to 10. We'll take a voice vote on the amendment to the amendment. All those in favor of that amendment to the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion's adopted. We now have Council Amendment Number Seven before us as amended. Are there further remarks? Not seeing any. Our committee gets to see democracy in action. We'll take a voice vote on the adoption of Council Amendment Number Seven as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion's adopted. We have Council Amendment Number Eight before us. Councilmember Morell for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I move approval of Council Amendment Number Eight.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt Council Amendment Number Eight. Mr. Kruger to brief.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon again, Councilmembers. Council Amendment Number Eight would clarify that the county would regulate channel migration zones as riparian protection areas. And so there's several changes to this section of code that would be modified to provide that clarification. Secondarily, the code would be modified to indicate that the buffer that's associated with the streams that are causing the potential channel migration would be measured from the ordinary high watermark of each regulated stream or river, whichever the case may be. And I'm happy to take any questions regarding the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Kruger or remarks on the amendment? Councilmember Morell?
Thank you, Vice Chair. We had quite a lengthy discussion on this particular one. But in looking at this, this is actually increasing the footage from 165 to 215. Is that correct?
So the underlying proposal, as it's crafted and before you, indicates that any buffer that's associated with a channel migration zone will be measured from the exterior boundary of the channel migration zone. And then there's language within code that indicates that a channel migration zone is a riparian protection area, but it's a little bit unclear when you read through it due to the various changes that were made to this section of code. So what's happening here is that the language is being clarified to indicate that the entire channel migration zone on both sides of a river or stream is a regulated critical area with a riparian protection area. So that's going to require analysis for regulated activities. Critical area reports will be required for development that occurs within that geography. So that's the first thing. And then the second thing is that the buffer will be measured from the ordinary high watermark. And so the buffer that's applied will be based upon the type of stream that it happens to be. So you can look at the table. And as was discussed with Amendment Number One, there are various buffer widths. The majority of buffers that are associated with channel migration zones are on the larger mainstream, stem rivers, like the Puyallup River. That particular buffer is regulated through the shoreline master program. And so it depends upon the shoreline environmental designation. There will be a buffer measured from the ordinary high watermark. That might be 75 feet. That might be 100 feet. Depends on the shoreline environmental designation.
And does this take into consideration any of the levee systems that have been built up in the valley?
It does to the extent that downstream from a point on the Puyallup River, the channel migration zone is defined as the floodway confined by the levee. And I can't give you off the top of my head precisely where that occurs, but there is that section of the Puyallup downstream from the city of Puyallup, for lack of a better description, where you have a confined channel migration zone pursuant to code.
And then, so being able to measure this buffer, there wouldn't be any problem getting an accurate measurement?
I don't believe, I don't believe so. The measurement of buffers from the edge of ordinary high watermarks is a fairly routine practice that the county is currently involved with. And you look at vegetation, you look at the presence of the morphology, I guess, of the shoreline in terms of what's happened through time. And you can distinguish the location of the ordinary high watermark.
Okay. So in other words, if someone going in there for a permit to build within the CMZ area, the county would be able to define whether there is, they're within the buffer or outside the buffer?
In the majority of cases, the presence of this critical area will not determine the buffer that regulates the location of new construction. It will be the shoreline master program and the buffer associated with the SMP and the shoreline regulations that are associated with the Shoreline Management Act. In many cases, the channel migration zone extends laterally further than shoreline jurisdiction. And in that case, there simply wouldn't be a buffer imposed. There would be, we're calling it a riparian protection area. So the potential for the need of a study, but there would be no buffer once you get several hundred feet away from the edge of the river.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Chair?
Thank you. Councilmember Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. I guess I'm trying to understand, Mr. Kruger, the portion that's crossed out in Section One, or is it because we're using a mathematical number as opposed to what is in the area?
So the strikeout that is included in Item Number One was removed prior to being received at council. And so that is not part of the amendment per se.
Mr. Perez might be ready to save you here. He raised his hand, so.
Mr. Perez, what do you have to add?
Sorry.
Yeah, no, I just, that portion was removed because the area of the CMZ is identified through, the channel migration zone is identified through a layer that we already have from a flood study that was conducted. Yeah. It's mapped in our GIS, and we have it all defined fairly regularly. So that language was removed because we have it identified.
Okay.
I think Councilwoman Hitchens, what you're getting at is the quote-unquote habitat area. And so the department, in many cases throughout this proposal, has struck out specific examples of habitats and referred to their GIS data sets, which provide the mapping tool in order to identify fish and wildlife habitat.
Okay. And then my second question, kind of along a similar line of Councilmember Morell, but just kind of a different twist. Will this allow for housing or other types of things that go through the permit process correctly to be built closer to rivers because of where we're measuring from now?
I'm not sure if I can answer that question. That's a very good question. So the proposal that came to the council indicated that there would be a buffer established at the outer edge of a channel migration zone. And the channel migration zone is a boundary that varies considerably depending upon where it's located. It seems intuitive to me that if you are waterward of that buffer, you can't build. That's kind of what it seems like. I mean, but the way that the code was structured, it wasn't clear whether or not you were in the buffer. Because the way the code was structured, the buffer starts at the edge of the CMZ and goes landward from that point. I would say that the code was, is clear that if you wanted to do development activity within the buffer, you would have to do a habitat study, and you would have to, you know, demonstrate the ability to do construction without degrading habitat within the buffer. What wasn't clear previously was what happens between that buffer and the actual river itself. It's riparian habitat, but it's not a buffer. So how does, how does, where does that leave the permit review staff or an applicant in terms of trying to navigate the code? This amendment eliminates that ambiguity by eliminating that buffer that was to be extended beyond the CMZ. And it pulls it back to the, in most cases, the SMP shoreline master program buffers, which may or may not permit development, typically not. Typically, if there's a shoreline buffer, there's shoreline variances and other requirements that need to be pursued in order to reduce the buffer. Once you're outside of that area and you are in, pursuant to this amendment, once you're outside of the shoreline jurisdiction, so now you're more than 200 feet away from the shoreline, and you're simply being regulated as a critical area called riparian protection area, the requirement would be to do a habitat assessment as part of your permit application, which would be reviewed based upon its merits. Are you, are you not, as an applicant, disturbing habitat in a way that can't be mitigated? And if the answer is no, you're not, I would assume you would be able to get your building permit under this particular scheme.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
And to all the committee that has spent a lot of time on this, and I was in there for most of it. Thank you.
Councilmember Denson?
Yes, thank you. Kind of going off of that question, if somebody could build outside of the buffer but still in this riparian area, which is the CMZ, wouldn't they be at risk of floods? I mean, this is the channel migration zone, so why would we allow somebody to build there?
We may not. And so there's a separate layer of regulatory standards that deal with flooding and flood management, which is also in the critical area regulation. This amendment does not attempt to do anything to that section of code. That stands on its own. And you're right, it may be very difficult to construct something within a channel migration zone due to that separate flood standard. But this amendment doesn't address that, very intentionally.
Okay.
This amendment was intended to simply deal with habitat, not flood.
All right. So there's another layer of the flood, the flood rules and regulations that would also be looking at these areas, that they would have to meet that threshold as well.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the really good questions. Any other questions or remarks? Councilmember Kruger?
Thank you, Chair. My remark is based on using the GIS and referring to that and taking out the language that tells what it is. So that means somebody has to go find that code, the GIS, in order to find out what it is. Is it, wouldn't it be easier to keep that language in, or will that be hyperlink, do you know? I just, going back and forth.
It's all hyperlink. So it is, it's very intuitive if you're doing some research on your property as to which critical area standards might apply or, you know, regulations might apply. So there's a search tool by putting in an address or parcel number that will just lead you to a map that will explain all of this.
It's more work, especially when you're not in a fast internet zone. And it's just very frustrating, anyway. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell?
Two things. First of all, I was doing some research on CMZs while we were doing this, so if I discovered, I apologize. When we look at the grid in Number Four, we changed that in Item Number One. So would, do we need an amendment to get it to match Item Number One? Or does it just by force of process automatically get updated to match Number One?
Right. So that was a question that we kind of touched on during study session. Committee Amendment Number One modified the table in Item Four here to indicate there would be 100-foot buffer for lakes and ponds. And as discussed in study session, Committee Amendment Number One has passed. If Committee Amendment Number Eight passes, staff will assume that that was council's intent to embed the 100-foot buffer and strike out less than 20 acres in the lakes and pond row of this table. And the same answer will be given on Amendment Number Nine, which has the same sort of scenario.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure for those playing along at home, on your bingo card, you're seeing what we're doing here and not thinking we're undoing something we did earlier. As I looked and understood a little bit more around the channel migration zones and the protections that they have, and then this overlay of the ordinary high watermark, I think this hits on the intent of the proposed, of the sponsor and provides the protections that we need. So I can be supportive of this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other remarks? Thank you for very clearly explaining a complicated system and all the different layers of protection our critical areas have. So well done, as always. We have Council Amendment Number Eight before us. We'll take a voice vote. The vote is to adopt Council Amendment Number Eight. All those in favor of adopting Council Amendment Number Eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Right, Council Amendment Number Nine. Councilmember Morell for a motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for approval, Council Amendment Number Nine.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt Council Amendment Number Nine. Ms. Ritt-Hunt?
Okay. So Council Amendment Number Nine would make a change in the size of the buffer for riparian protection areas on type F streams. So the proposal, the proposal would change the buffer from 150 feet, as it currently is, to 200 feet. And the amendment would change that to 170-foot riparian protection area buffer on type F streams.
Questions or comments about Council Amendment Number Nine? Councilmember Morell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And there again, I appreciate staff's work on all these amendments. And I swear this is the last one from me. But getting back to type F streams and area, I have a lot of them in my area. And so when I looked at this, I requested that staff look into, one, best available science, talk to surface water, talk to advanced planning, fish and wildlife, whoever, and say, okay, where did this come from? And it did come from fish and wildlife, as far as I understand, with no real science behind it, other than the fact of soil conditions and tree height and a lot of other, you know, environmental issues out there. But in reality, there was just really nothing hard about their 200-foot. So in looking at it, trying to, one, protect the area, but yet allow people to enjoy some of the area around their creeks, I came up with 170 feet. And discussions with Councilmember Herrera, who also has a lot of these type of F streams in his area, signed on and said, well, that makes sense. So I am just looking at figuring out a middle-of-the-road, as far as footage goes. And to me, 170 makes more sense, even though I wanted 150, but 170 makes more sense. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there other remarks here? Thank you. Other other remarks here?
I would just, Chair, I'm reticent to change the standard that our staff, I think, spent a lot of time making a thoughtful recommendation to. So I'm I'm not inclined to support this amendment at this time just because I think our staff has done a lot of review and thinking of best available science and competing priorities. Other remarks? legislature Campbell?
Thank you, Chair. As I understand it, it was at 150, 200 is proposed. Councilmember Morrell's trying to hit the middle, though 170 is not quite the middle. I would say that the 170 doesn't quite quite hit where we need to hit. I wouldn't support 170. If you wanted to withdraw it and continue to work your numbers and finalize things, we can have more discussion, but that would be up to you.
Councilmember Morrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To council member Campbell, is there a number that would?
Let's discuss. I don't want to just start throwing numbers back and forth here.
I'm just saying for staff time, and we could resolve it now instead of having to bring it back would would be better. But there again, I'm willing to put some more thought into it, but I just want to make sure that we're not wasting staff time on it if the majority thinks that 200-foot is a bottom line here. How should we say, a 200-foot line in the sand?
I'm sorry, throwing numbers too fast might end up at 250, so.
Councilmember Herrera?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to ask staff a little bit more about the studies. I think councilmember Morrell talked about one of them, the fish and wildlife one. And there was a second one that gave, I think, a more definitive look into it and came up with a number.
Sure. So the in our best available science documents for the county, you can find this discussion in the technical memo on riparian management zones that was released in August 2023. And in that memo, it goes through different approaches to setting buffers for riparian management zones under different scientific frameworks. So the wild the fish and wildlife in, without going into the detailed explanation that I gave in study session, but I could if you wanted me to, the fish and wildlife framework ended up with a recommendation of a 200-foot. A different framework that's supported by the scientific underpinnings from the Department of Natural Resources would suggest 170-foot buffer. And the reason for that is that while both while both of those frameworks, and there was actually a third framework also reviewed that was not recommended at all. But of those two frameworks that we're talking about today, both of them used some soil information. In the framework by DNR, the top buffer would be 200 feet. But in Pierce County, we don't have the soil site type. We have no class one site types in that methodology that would suggest a 200-foot buffer. All of our soil site types are type two in the DNR methodology, which would suggest 170-foot buffer. So, you know, as I mentioned before, science is a process. There are lots of, there are different ways of coming about and reviewing information. And in this case, there's different frameworks with different suggestions that were reviewed by the county.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Does council want to proceed? More amendments can be brought forward at final, as always. And final, again, is currently going to be recommended for December 3rd in order for us to have our final environmental impact statement. The options are to withdraw, vote this amendment up, or vote this amendment down. Let me give councilmember Morrell one more opportunity to speak, since it's his amendment, about how you wish to proceed on this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I said before, as long as there is willingness of the majority of the council to work on an acceptable amendment, I'm willing to withdraw it. But if 200 feet is the drop dead line in not accepting what DNR recommends, then, you know, I don't want to waste staff's time is my concern. So I'm willing to withdraw it as long as we're willing to work on it. And so I will make a motion to withdraw.
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we withdraw council amendment number nine. Take a voice vote on the motion to withdraw council amendment number nine. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion's adopted. We have council amendment number 10 before us. Councilmember Hoover for a motion?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move amendment number 10 for approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt council amendment number 10. Ms. Red Hunt?
Okay, amendment number 10 would remove a subsection that has a requirement to legally encumber wetland mitigation sites in tracts or easements. So for a little bit of context about where this provision sits in the wetland process regulations, which is where it sits, there are requirements to document where mitigation sites are going to be throughout the process of creating a mitigation site and getting to an approval of what's going to happen there as part of the mitigation. And then, once the mitigation site is installed, there are requirements for five years of monitoring, which also includes a description of where the restoration or mitigation site is. So this would remove the requirement that that would need to be legally, the documentation of where that is would be required to be encumbered in a tractor easement.
Thank you. Questions, comments on council amendment number 10? Councilor Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. So does this open the door for people to buy land without knowing that some a land has been designated as a area that is a mitigation site?
Without a formal documentation, so in, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So in some cases, in most cases, through a plat or a development process, there would be, just through that process, a natural documentation that would come up, for example, in a title report. If it was subdivided, the plat would be on there. But if it wasn't part of something like that, then it could get lost through the cracks. Someone could come in and want to develop something, and they would know, they would find out they had a restoration or a mitigation site on their property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoover?
Thank you, Chair. I guess I'm kind of confused in how something can go through such a process and be mitigation site and not where it's documented. You know, like you're saying, the title report, it should come up?
It it wouldn't necessarily if, so so through the documentation process, if someone's going through a subdivision, the area of the critical area mitigation would be shown on the face of the plat. It wouldn't necessarily need to be in its own easement or its own tract, according to this, but it would show up on the face of a plat. And if someone is doing a title report on that property, the plat document should also be part of that title report. But if someone, if it was if it was someone who did a mitigation and it wasn't associated with some other type of a formal process that would record documents, the documents would be recorded in our county GIS perhaps. They would be recorded in our county permitting system. So when someone came in for future permits, you could look back and see that there was a restoration site there or a mitigation site. But it wouldn't necessarily, without an easement, for example, it wouldn't necessarily be a notice on title.
Because what's confusing, when there are so many different encumbrances on a property that you might not know in a search, I'm trying to think of what that might be, but it just seems odd to me that this kind of regulation, when anytime you purchase something, everything is always, you have to study this, you have to look for mitigation, or you have to look for wetlands to see, you know, what you might have to do, where you can build, what's in the way of building. How could this be ignored? When I look at where the dump is on 304th and Meridian, the section there is a mitigated area for a wetland replacement. So what what's the difference between how people would know that is a mitigation area versus something else? I'm, it's because nature is is not static that it seems we need to have some kind of flexibility in putting an encumbrance on a piece of property, in which my understanding, this would be in perpetuity, that it's very difficult to remove in the event that the wetland ceases to be a wetland. How do you remove this? And this, or maybe maybe I should do a withdrawal and work a little bit more on this because of the changes that can occur. Maybe I'm not understanding how big of a mitigation area, or maybe it's relevant to any size of a wetland regulation.
So in order in order for someone to have a mitigation area, they have to propose a development that will impact the wetland. And then the department would go through that application and apply mitigation sequencing. So first, they'd try to avoid it by potentially relocating the development or other measures to avoid impacting the wetland. But if if there is an allowed impact to the wetland, then there has to be a mitigation to balance the impact. Through the process of the mitigation site, that gets documented. But depending on the level of the development that's being proposed, if it's within a development that has some other sort of formal mechanism for for recognizing what's happening on that land, which would usually be something like a subdivision, which would have a plat or a planned unit development, those documents get recorded at the end of those processes, and they show everything. They show where the streets and the utilities and the landscaping and the mitigation site would all be there. So it doesn't, in such a case that that would happen, this provision doesn't necessarily apply because there's already a formal process for documenting that. If if a development proposes an impact and is going to mitigate, and they, and that mitigation isn't part of something that has a formal documentation, then there is documentation by the department through all of its approvals, through its approval process. There's documents that are saved in the permit record for that parcel.
Okay.
But it's not necessarily a legal conveyance. It would need to be a legal document under this provision, but with this removed, it wouldn't be a legal requirement to set it aside.
Right, there would still be, Ms. Mr. Chair, I'd like to motion to pull this as we have the others to bring it back, because there's some questions that I have on that, if I may.
Is there a second to the motion to withdraw? It's been properly moved and seconded that we withdraw council amendment number 10. Any further remarks? Seeing none, take a voice vote on the adoption of the motion to withdraw council amendment number 10. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Amendment is withdrawn. Our final amendment on this critical areas ordinance bill is council amendment number 11. Councilmember Denson for a motion, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I move that we approve amendment number 11.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt council amendment number 11.
Okay. Last but not least, council member or council amendment number 11 removes an unnecessary and incorrect reference to the current use and assessment program. So in 18E20, there is a subsection G which describes that owners of agricultural lands, timberlands, or open space can participate in the current use assessment program. So within this subsection, there are two items that are factually incorrect. Number one, in Pierce County, there's no longer the ability to apply for to apply for current use for, this program is no longer applicable to timberlands. So that's factually incorrect, as well as the reference to the RCW in this section is factually incorrect. But overall, the overall, the, just this section that basically says people with lands that have various kinds of open space can participate in a county program is non-regulatory, and it's not necessary to have in the section on critical area regulations. And so it would be removing it adds to clarity and corrects those mistakes.
Thank you for explaining the purpose of council amendment number 11. Are there further remarks on amendment number 11? Councilmember Herrera?
Thank you, Chair. Just so, it sounds like a technical amendment. Were the changes that made these irrelevant a long time ago? And we're just kind of like, oh, this is here?
Yes.
And or is it something new that came up that we got to change right away?
No, these, so the reference to the RCW, it probably was wrong for a really long, it's probably been wrong in there for a really long time, unfortunately. And it it could have been, Mike might correct me, but I think it's like 8433 or something. So it might have even been a Scrivener's error along the way. And then.
You're getting agreement behind you, by the way.
Yeah, okay. So and then the timberlands were removed quite some time ago from the current use assessment program. So it's just a bit of a holdover provision that 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 has been there. But the county has many other programs for preservation of various types of open space that include current use program as well as other programs, and there could be future programs. So it seems out of place here.
Thank you, Chair.
Thanks for those questions. Any other questions? Not seeing any. We'll take a voice vote on the adoption of council amendment number 11. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion's adopted. Are there any other amendments? Not seeing any. We have the proposal in front of us as we amended. We're going to open up for a public hearing on the update to the critical areas ordinance. We'll start here in council chambers. Does any member of the public wish to provide comment on ordinance 2024-553S? Not seeing anyone come to the podium here in council chambers. Mr. Weinsberry, anybody in the Zoom room?
Yes, sir. For any members of the public who wish to provide comment on proposal number 02024-553S, press the raised hand icon on Zoom or star 9 on your telephone keypad. And at this time, looks like we have two hands, Chair. First one ending in 874. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening, council. This is Thomas Wick over in Gig Harbor. There's a concern, I took a quick peruse through your document that you had, and I don't think the council can actually approve this. But I'm going to refer to page 27 of the 201-page document, number two. And it's written, where the flood insurance study and firm do not provide adequate best or most recent information, Pierce County may use flood information. or most recent information, Pierce County may use flood information that is more restrictive or detailed than the FEMA data. This information may include, but it's not limited to, and it lists multiple, but the one that I want to bring your attention to, it says maps showing increased flood inundation based on future buildout or changed hydrologic conditions. The problem is, Pierce County regulation currently requires development to maintain their post-development outflows to the pre-developed condition. That is a Pierce County regulation, and it's also a Gig Harbor regulation. I think it's actually state. So, but this is contradictory to that regulation and that law, because this, this is saying that Pierce County can come in and say, hey, and the key word is, it says flood inundation based on future buildout. And so I would ask that the council go back, because when you, when they develop the, or whatever they're going to do with the environmental impact statement, they also have to look at what happened to our property in this instance. So Pierce County put a flood hazard designation on our property after the city of Gig Harbor flooded it. Now this, this goes one step further that direction, saying, no, it doesn't even have to happen yet. So I would ask that the council take a real hard look at this, because I don't think you can approve it when it contradicts existing Pierce County regulation. So that, that's a concern I have. And I also, I don't know where my time is, but I was hoping Mr. Perez might be able to comment on that this evening. Thank you, Chair Mello. I appreciate you allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you.
Next, we have HP. Please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes.
I don't know where the HP come from. I'm D. Terry Hurd of the Fredrickson area. And I was involved with the LUAC and many of these issues for many years. The strikeouts were not LUAC-driven. Or were they? Did you present all these things that you're presenting to the LUAC first, who's the local area experts to consider? There was no verification of why, and who was absolved. Years ago, the county did a study of all the wetlands that were put forward, and it was supposed to resolve all these issues. Sorry for the popery. I was just making notes as I went through the many amendments you have. To make a rule to cover all waterways is not considering the waterway in question. And again, that was the study that was done by the Pierce County years ago, because we have many different waterways, that many have many different issues, and you can't just have a rule that's going to cover everything. The best available science is not definitive to a waterway issue overall. Again, I have to express this fact, that we have many different types of waterways in Pierce County that need to be addressed individually with some time given. The study was to show wetlands to avoid the question of development issues. Now you want to remove the government's study to allow for this different type of development. This is a fight that we had long and often with planning and land use. They came in and they said, oh, well, we want to do this, we want to do that, and it was the strikeouts. We didn't present them. Should I say the master builders, the realtors, the developers, and other people, they came in and said, this is what we need, and then we were forced to deal with it. What I see by the current effort was that we, the LUAC, were forced to do over and over again. You didn't come to us, the people who live there in that area, that have the experience. No, we didn't have the document in our hand that said we were certified to understand what was going on. We'd only lived there for 25 or 30 years. What are we trying to accomplish? If it's the environment we want to protect, then ask the people who have lived there, and then gather that information. Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this time, we have another hand, Chair.
With no further hands, we're going to close the public hearing. Mr. Perez, I am going to ask you to briefly summarize the public input process before we take a motion on this item. I think it's important to the community and the council be reminded about the public engagement process. Sorry for not preparing you for that, but honestly, there was a conversation that came up during the public hearing.
Yeah, no. So county staff, long-range planning, spent approximately, the course of two years doing public engagement in multiple phases related to the comprehensive plan and the critical area ordinances. Back in 2022, the scoping engagement was done, and that was going out to the public and getting information on what, what sort of areas of the critical area ordinances were important to the public as a whole. And then also, I believe, I want to say, the beginning of 2023, there was more public meetings related to just presenting what was given to us as, as scientific documents and what those covered related to the scoping that was identified. I don't unfortunately remember the numbers right off the top of my head in relation to the number of emails, Facebook posts, TikTok, YouTube, and then also just public meetings the good old-fashioned way. But it was pretty extensive throughout the past several years. We also met with, as was mentioned, other stakeholders. Some of those did include groups like Master Builders Association, and also included the Sunrise Organization, and also our tribes that are in proximity to us with their sovereign nations. So this has been a pretty long row, as far as from beginning to end on the critical area ordinance, and throughout the process, especially with critical areas, we engaged very early on with the public and our partners.
Thank you for summarizing that. Ms. Rithun, maybe you're familiar, if we, if a member of the public wanted to really dive into the public engagement plan, they would be able to go back to, what would be the most efficient way for a member of the council or the public to try to review the public engagement plan?
Absolutely. So on Public Works website, there is, there is a section devoted to public engagement, and I would direct them primarily to three major documents that talk about the engagement opportunities that Mr. Perez spoke to. So the first is the county's initial scoping document, and not only is there a description of all the outreach and engagement, but there's also a summary of what the department learned from that scoping engagement, which included a lot of subjects, but also critical areas. That was from fall of 2022. So there's a report specifically on that engagement period. Then, as he spoke to, in early 2023, there was about a 60-day or so engagement period exclusively on the subject of critical areas, and there's a report there. It involved several community conversations, as well as outreach to groups that were unlikely to participate or had particularly affected by potential changes in critical areas. A lot of those were small group discussions with plenty of time for conversation and input. A description of that is in a report called the Critical Areas Engagement Report. And then finally, the department did another about two-month review process for all of the comprehensive plan documents, including the draft critical area regulations. That report is also available. For people who made specific comments during that engagement period, the FEIS will also have specific responses to people's comments from that period. So we expect that in a week or two, when the FEIS is available. So lots of, lots of engagement on critical areas, and those reports will also talk about how comments are integrated into next steps as the process moved along.
Thank you for adding that context. Helpful. So I believe the motion that we're looking for is a continuance to the meeting of Tuesday, December 3rd. First Chair Campbell for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to, Chair, I have the number before me. I would like to continue proposal number O2024-. I'm going to stop here. Do I need to roll all amendments into a substitute? Realized where I was. All right. Thank you, Chair. I would like to roll all amendments into a substitute and continue proposal number O2024-553S2 to the meeting of December 2nd, 3rd, December 3rd.
Yes, December 3rd. Yes.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we roll all amendments into a substitute, that we continue ordinance 2024-553S2 to the meeting of Tuesday, December 3rd. Are there any final remarks? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion's adopted. This is going to be continued into the meeting of Tuesday, December 3rd. Thank you for the good conversation and the preparation of amendments. Thank you, staff, very much for your very good work. We're at item number 10, Community Forum. Community Forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any topic that is of significance to or affecting Pierce County government, and that did not appear for final action on today's agenda. There is a three-minute time limit. Please state your name, if you would like it on the record, and address all your comments to the Chair. We'll start with those in council chambers. Anyone wish to, now's your time. Thank you for being so patient. Welcome. Please state your name for the record. There's a timer on the TV screen.
My name is Guyrel Anthony, and I was invited here by Ms. Denson. I went to her Key Peninsula Town Hall meeting. And so the reason why I'm here is me and Dean Curry created a fit and all awareness and prevention program called Faces 253, and that stands for fit and all awareness classes, education, and support. And we have this box here that is so unique, that can help out of schools, establishments, and things like that. So I only got two minutes, so I need to open it up. And it has everything in here from all the things you need. And what's unique about this box is this right here.
First off, let's take a deep breath. Step number one is to check to see if somebody really is unresponsive. You can do that by gently shaking them and shouting, or you can use your knuckles against the sternum to see if you get a reaction. If you find this person is unresponsive, please call 911 immediately. The next step would be to remove the safety barrier devices for you, the rescuer. Once you're protected, remove a single dose of Moloxone from the lump box. You will insert this into the nostril. As you aim the tip towards the ear, you will push the plunger firmly. If you find that this person is not breathing professionally, you want to use the rescue breathing mask, face shield, that is in the one kit. Push the bite block down into the mouth of the victim, raise up the chin, pinch the nose, and breathe. Once spontaneous breathing returns, we want to place this patient in what we call the recovery position until the paramedics arrive. And that will be on their left side, with at least one hand over their head and a bent knee to keep them in place. Once the paramedics arrive, you want to give them information on everything that you have done for this patient, and you will give them any used or unused Moloxone.
And so what we've done so far is, we've partnered with the Attorney General in Montana, and they bought 500 of these boxes and put them into their schools. And the thing about this box is that it's also can be used, it can plug into any TV, and you can use it as a training mechanism. And even when these things actually happen, if we already know how to do CPR and all these things, you can just listen to it and then follow the steps, because this is actually very important. So the idea is to be able to continue training churches like we do, and put these in certain establishments, as in a RV lot down in Fife. And because those guys was happy to have it, because in the areas that they're in, they're in high active areas to where a lot of these individuals who tend to have an overdose need to be saving. So I talked to her about it, and she asked me to come so I can present the box, because when I went to her thing, I didn't have it out there, and a lot of her town hall members had questions on actually how to administer it, where to find it at, and they would like to have it in their schools. And so in each classroom, because the time is so critical, it'd be easily readily accessible if they had it in the classroom. So that was it. Though, that was what I wanted to come, come present, and then, and Dean also brought some stuff for a couple of people here, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being with us. Be grateful you came to this meeting and not one in like a couple of weeks, so you've been here for seven more hours or something.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So yes, I have all you guys' contact information from your cards in there, and I'll reach out to you, and then we can proceed forward.
Thank you for sharing. Very valuable. Thank you so much for being with us. You can, you can leave whatever you wish to leave with, with the clerk. We would love to see it.
So there are seven of you guys, and there are two of these things, so we call us colleges or establishments. We have the actual information there that we actually train the people on.
Thank you very much for your kindness. It's great to see the resource that you've developed. Thank you, and thank you again for your patience.
Oh, yeah. This is my first one.
Good job. Perfect.
Next time, I'm going to show up at 4:30.
Smart, smart man. Yeah. Smart. Councilmember Denson should have been able to tell you that, but we'll get on earlier. There's no other members of the public here in council chambers. Mr. Winesbury, anybody in our Zoom room for Community Forum?
Yes, sir. For any members of the public who wish to provide comment, press the raised hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. It looks like at this time, we have three hands. Mr. Chair, first one ending in 874, please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Yes, Chair Mello, this is Thomas Wick again. I wanted to just express my real frustration and disappointment with Councilwoman Denson, because she, she advanced that motion forward, the critical areas ordinance, and she's intimately familiar with what transpired that involved our property and my neighbor's property. And there's not one out of 201 pages, there's nothing in there that addresses where you have two jurisdictions that are adjacent to each other, one's doing buildout, and one's receiving a storm. And there's nothing in there to make sure that, you know, the left hand knows what the right hand is doing. And to explain the importance of this, when we were being flooded, I went to this Pierce County, and I said, guys, we need your help. This is what's happening. Pierce County's response was, sorry, we can't help you. The development's occurring in Gig Harbor. You need to go get to talk to Gig Harbor. But what do we do? We go down to Gig Harbor, and we say, Gig Harbor, hey, the drainage isn't here that was reported. Doesn't exist. And Gig Harbor says, sorry, you live in the county. Go talk to the county. And there's the Grand Canyon. And I am just deeply, deeply disappointed that Ms. Denson, who represents me, I am her constituent, she's intimately familiar with exactly what happened with us, what's currently happening with us, and now we have a flood hazard designation on our property, which devalues it, encumbers it, and it makes it difficult for us to do things on our property. So I would like, when the council comes back on December 3rd, I would like that issue addressed, not just on my behalf, but on other Pierce County residents or citizens that could experience the same thing. Now, one last thing. I tried to get a meeting with the building official to discuss submittal requirements to continue with permit 761519. I was given two dates, the 14th and 19th of November, and when I requested that risk management staff attend that meeting, silence. They refused to respond. That is unacceptable. That is just completely unacceptable, and I'm asking, Chair Mello, if you or Ms. Denson would reach out to the risk manager and to the building official and make that meeting happen this week? Thank you very much again for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Next, we have HP. Please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Where'd the HP come from?
We'll have to do some technical assistance for you offline, Mr. Hurd.
Okay, thank you. Hey, listen, Mr. Chairman, councilmembers, I- I realize some of you are going off to other elected positions or unelected positions. I want to thank you for taking the time of putting up with someone who's got a chip on their shoulder after many years of dealing with the issues that come before the council on land use issues. Me, and there's other ones I spoke to. Listen, I realize that your hands are, I'm going to say, not free to address us as a 101 in a conversation, which is a sad part for those of us who are coming forward to try to resolve the issues that come before us and they're trying to address with the council. What happens to democracy, I, I'm not going to enter into here. You're going off into other positions. But the sad part for those of us, the few of us, and getting fewer, who come before the council is realize we're a small voice of common sense on the area that we live in and that you are going to take your votes and your experience and move on to other places. And then we'll have these new people who come in that are unaware of the issues that exist within side our communities that the few people, again, I'm going to say, that are willing to step forward before democracy is destroyed, to speak to you. I have come before you and expressed on a number of times the laws and how they are not being followed. I, I'm frustrated as an individual. I realize that as an individual, I cannot address all the issues that come before us. But I would give one last issue. On the state constitution, Article 7, Revenue and Taxation, when it comes to property, this is an issue that I feel strongly about is not being addressed properly within the county, for that matter, the state, of those areas that look to develop and gentrify as much as possible to get revenues for the county to do with as it sees fit. And the rest of us, the taxpayers, are not being addressed. You're squeezing blood from a turnip, so to speak. Please look at the people and realize through strength we will achieve what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd.
Next, we have Nancy. Please state your name for the record. You will have three minutes.
Hi. My name's Nancy, and I just wanted to comment on the land use thing. That if we had a law about trees, like trees that were older than five years old, then I feel like it would resolve a lot of disputes that are happening. And also, it would protect our old growth trees, and it would prevent developers from clearing, like forestry areas and force them to build on areas that are already clear cut or have been clear cut recently. So I think that would be, you know, in everyone's best interest since we need more trees and less buildings, considering there's over 100 warehouses in Pierce County that are right now for rent or for sale because they are sitting empty. And yet, for some reason, we're still trying to build more warehouses, even though there's, there's like over a billion feet square footage of warehouses that are not being used. So I don't see why we need more. And I also wanted to comment that Pierce County sheriffs are actually doing their job, and that's pretty cool. So I wanted to comment on that. They successfully found somebody that had one of my debit cards, and they didn't prosecute him, which was weird, but they did notify me that they found somebody with my debit card. So that was really cool and good job on them. Now, if only there were laws in place that made it so that they had to investigate murders. Because currently, there is no Washington state law that says that they have to investigate murders, which is weird and shameful and sucks a lot because then murders go uninvestigated, especially if they were labeled as medical calls. Because medical calls don't get police reports. And where there is no police report, there is no investigation, even when the medical examiner says that the person died of mysterious circumstances. So that's a thing that I feel like it should be addressed because I know if I had a medical emergency and I died afterwards, and there's a possibility that there is foul play, I would want that to be investigated and not just disregarded and swept under the rug like, you know, Tacoma and Pierce County is doing, which sucks. And so, yeah. Also, save the trees and justice for Donald Spencer. Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this time, we have no other hands, Chair.
We're going to close the Community Forum portion of our meeting, bring it back to the council. As always, I want to thank members of the public who come and share ideas they have, concerns, thoughts, and requests. We, we truly do listen. And this is how we build our knowledge base of what's important. And many of us take appropriate action after learning things or accumulate knowledge over a period of time. So we really do get a lot of value from listening and learning when people present their concerns during community forums. So thank you for participating. We're at item number 11, Other Business and Announcements. Is there any other business or announcements from council members? Not seeing any. As long as there's any other business for council. With no other business before the Pierce County Council, we are adjourned.